I'm going to call the August 17th meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. May we please have a roll call?
Ms. Chester, Mr. Cho.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Yutman. Mr. Warrenbrand.
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf. Mr. Welch.
Here. I believe we have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to ask anybody that might want to testify here tonight to stand and be sworn or affirm. This is not obligate you to speak, but you cannot speak unless you get sworn in. Do you and each of you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your belief? Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, move on to an approval of the minutes. Believe everybody received their copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Any changes that anyone wants to bring to the attention of the board? Hearing none, ask for a motion to approve.
I move the, we approve the minutes of the July 20th, 2016 meeting as in the draft.
It's now been moved, is there a second? It's been seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, anyone opposed, the same minutes are approved. Are there any written communications?
There are none.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any continued public hearings?
There are none.
Alright. At this time then, we will move on to our new public hearings. And I will first call ZBA-2016-C-01 for hearing, and we have a staff report, please.
So the following is request is ZBA case 2016 C-01. Request by Beverly and Achampong for a conditional use permit to operate a daycare facility at 1101 East Colorado Street in the R5 medium-high-density multiple-family residential district. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for daycare facility. The zoning ordinance defines daycare homes as a facility that offers care for children or dependent adults for a number of less than five. A daycare facility is the distinguishment that it provides for five or more, generally larger, for non-home-based daycare such as this proposal. They're seeking a permit for the property at 1101 East Colorado Street in, on a property that's zoned R5, medium-high-density, multiple-family residential. In the zoning ordinance, daycare facilities are allowed in the R5 district with a conditional use permit. The property itself is a currently, it's a vacant building of, on a 0.34 acre lot at the corner of Colorado Avenue and Cottage Grove Avenue. It's a single-story structure, approximately 5100 square feet. It was built in the 70s. It's, was previously used for a professional office, to which it received a conditional use permit about 10 years ago. And it's now been vacant, so the current applicant is seeking to open a daycare center there. There also was a daycare center there that existed for, I think since the building's establishment, for many years as well. So daycare existing there is not unprecedented. Quickly, the other details of the property. It is, its future land use consideration is multi, multiple-family residential. It's surrounded by R5 and R6 properties, B3 property to the north, but it's almost completely surrounded by apartment buildings. And then the Philo Road business corridor is just a block or two to the east. So the applicant seeks to open a daycare that would accommodate children of all age groups between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. They intend to hire several staff members, up to five or six employees to start. There is a parking lot in the facility that can accommodate as many as 13 cars. Just jump to the site plan right there. With one of those spaces being a handicap space. There is also a drive aisle made available for dropping off children or picking up children that can accommodate up to four vehicles. The state of Illinois, through the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, has specific rules regarding, regarding how many children can be in a unit based on staffing requirements, as well as space and square footage. The ratios for children can range from, for infants, from one staff member to every four children, to school-aged children being one staff member for every 20 children. So the num, the volume of children that the building can accommodate depends on the staffing levels as well. The space in the build, the space requirement for every child is, at a bare minimum, 35 square feet per child, but there are some other physical requirements of the facility depending on the age group as well. That makes the overall number of children that the daycare could facilitate, that make, that number could vary, it could be as little as 32, or it could be as many as, up to, you know, it could be several dozen. It depends on the staffing levels and the age groups. A few items that would, a few characteristics that would frame how many children could be accommodated in this daycare center. The zoning ordinance requirement for parking spaces for employees at a daycare facility is, it requires a drop-off space, which is already provided at the property. It requires three parking spaces for every two employees. With 13 spaces that currently exist in the parking lot, that would provide for enough parking spaces for eight employees to work at the center. The other requirement would be, as I said, the standards required by, you know, state and federal law for daycare facilities. It's also worth mentioning the previous conditional use permit that was granted to this property to operate as a daycare center going all the way back in the early 70s. That was a, that was a conditional use permit that granted, that made specifications of eight employees and up to 93 children. It should be specified, though, that that was under a zoning ordinance from decades ago, which had different requirements and under state standards and requirements that are probably very different than they were in the early 70s. But that just gives a framework for what the number might have originally been when it operated in years past. The, I should just briefly mention, the property was granted a conditional use permit and a variance for a reduction in the required amount of parking spaces from 16 to 14. That variance no longer applies because the use was discontinued. This is a separate use than the professional office use that last existed. So the requirements for a conditional use in the zoning ordinance ask if that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. This would be daycare facility made available to nearby residential neighborhood. It'd be reused in a vacant building, as well as its close proximity to trans, to lots of transporta, transit lines, as well as busier areas of the city. The second criteria, the second question, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, otherwise injurious to the public welfare. It's for a property that is already accommodated, a daycare center. It would not be expanding the footprint of the building. It would not be making any major exterior changes. There would be some changes inside. The applicant is working with an architect to eliminate a wall or two. They'll have to make some changes to the bathroom facilities to accommodate toilets for smaller children and everything else, but the, our conversations with the city's Building Safety Division has said that those won't be many substantial physical changes. The drop-off area and off-street parking are adequate for a daycare facility in that district. It's location on a collector's street next to a major arterial. The third criteria, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except for where such regulations and standards are modified by Section 8.3. There would be some improvements with the building that are still required to comply with the city's Building Safety Code, state regulations and zoning ordinance, but it would not be detrimental because it is accommodating of use that's existed there before. It's using the same building, as mentioned earlier, and it's largely preserving the footprint and the intent, and the intensity of use. So, with those findings, city staff recommends that the board grant the proposed conditional use with the following conditions, that the use must conform to all zoning development and State of Illinois Department of Children and Family Services codes, that the use generally conforms to the site plan and floor plan submitted in this application. I'll go back to that in just a moment. The parking lot is restriped to indicate the 13 spaces and the handicap space. There is a, let me just rotate this one moment. This is a layout of the, of the interior. These were just some conceptual ideas that the applicants indicated as to where some of the age groups might be located. Those, where, you see somewhere some of the walls are X-ed out to where they might remove some of those walls. Staff did a conceptual, based on the physical characteristics of the building, the staffing requirements for different age groups, and the overall, you know, some of the requirements of state code for different age groups. Staff figured that a facility of this size can accommodate anywhere from 60 to 70 children perhaps, with as many as seven to 10 staff members. Obviously, the, obviously, the center is limited by the amount of parking spaces made only available for eight staff, eight staff members. But that was just a conceptualization that we figured to what might be possible in this facility. And lastly, I will just also scroll up to an insert of the staffing requirements to give you an idea of the staff, staff member to child ratio for the different age groups. So the applicant is here, the property owner is also here, as well as the broker representing the property owner and the applicant. Did you have any questions?
Before you go to questions, if I can just add a couple of technical corrections. Should your motion include the entire subject line in the memo? I would point out that when we said Colorado Street, we of course meant Colorado Avenue, so if the record could reflect that. As well as condition number three, as it's written, indicates that the parking lot is to be restriped for 13 spaces and one handicap space. I believe the total number of parking spaces in that lot is 13, so it should either read, indicate the 13 parking spaces, or the 12 regular parking spaces and one handicap space.
Any questions for staff?
Go ahead, Nick.
I have one, I guess if it's 13 spaces and based on that ratio of three to two, would that mean that there'd be nine employees? Kind of like a, I don't know if that's necessarily important, but I guess what I'm really trying to understand is, is why is, why does two employees need three parking spaces? I know that's probably...
That's just the ratio that's the zoning ordinance prescribes. It's for every two employees that the, that are employed there, you need three parking spaces.
It's to also help accommodate the drop-off and any, maybe not...
So it's like overflow.
Right, or not permanent employees, but sometimes there are, you know, checks from the state, that kind of thing, or deliveries.
I have a question then. The children, number of children to be primarily regulated by the staff or the number of parking spaces, because what if you have, this is on bus line, right?
It's close.
Doesn't the bus go right down Colorado?
Yes.
Yeah. So what if you have a substantial number of employees that are taking the bus line, which if I understand the math, then might allow them to take more kids if they say, "We only have eight employees that are going to drive." So that's what I'm asking you, are we going to try to limit this thing based on parking spaces?
We didn't prescribe a limit based on the amount of parking spaces, but we're suggesting that the, the available parking says that it can accommodate only eight employees. Some employees might take the bus, some might ride their bike, some might walk, certainly, but...
But I guess my question is, based on the space inside, they could possibly have more than eight employees, correct? Because they could have more children if...
Purely speaking on the physical capabilities of the building, yes.
But that's really up for the state to decide. So the state, of course, will evaluate the floor plan. With all uses, everyone is confined with the zoning ordinance requirements for parking. So should someone have a lesser need for parking, they would need to demonstrate that and seek a variance.
I see. Because that was my point exactly. It would seem to me that when you're dealing with a state facility, that the state standards would trump everything.
Well, it wouldn't trump the, because it's not a state facility. It's just that that particular use is, has oversight by the state, but...
You're right, it's not a state facility.
So it would not trump the parking requirements, just like any other use. They would need to meet the parking requirements. Should they need a variance, they can certainly seek one.
Alright.
Just to be clear, the state, the parking requirement is a city verbanan zoning?
Yes.
Regulation? Okay.
Yeah, and this is a private business, so that's what Lori meant. I misspoke. It's not a state facility. I meant the state regulations, but she's correct. This is a private business, so they have to adhere to the zoning.
Okay. I guess hypothetically then, I don't, I don't want to kind of like draw this out, but why does our zoning restrict the ability for a business to maximize their capacity to function as a daycare, or whatever it is, because of parking? I guess that's, that's confusing to me.
That's, that's how the ordinance is written.
I mean, what, I mean, does that call then? I mean, is that updated, is that modernized? I mean, is this something that, you mentioned something being 70 years, or like in the 70s. Obviously, things have changed. We have buses, we have people that walk, we have people that drop off, we have Uber, we have all these kind of things, but we're saying that this business is restricted by parking requirements in terms of the employees that they can hire because of parking in their ability to serve the toddlers or the three-year-olds, two-year-olds, or whatever. I think that's kind of counterintuitive, that a zoning would restrict a business from maximizing its potential. But that could be another discussion.
Any further questions? Thank you. Is the petitioner or anyone who wants to speak in favor of this request present? You have to come up, everything's being recorded. You have to sit at the table and sign in as well.
The only...
You have to declare who you are, I'm sorry.
I'm Robert Achampong. My wife and I are the ones who are going to put the daycare in that building.
Go ahead, sir.
My concern is the concern that you guys raised, because the state requires 35 square feet of usable space per child. And technically, the physical layout of the building can accommodate much more children than what the parking is restricting. Statistically, maybe 75% of the employees that work at a daycare would drive. 25 to 30% would take a bus, by virtue of how much money they make and their socioeconomic background. So the parking requirement is a little bit restrictive in terms of ability to maximize the capability of the business that we are trying to do. So if the zoning committee can find it in this, they seem to make an exception for the parking.
Do you have anything further?
No.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I don't believe we have, our role is rather restrictive. We can grant or deny the permit, but we can't, without it being formally proposed, we can't deal with the variance issues that Ms. Pearson referred to. That's a whole nother process. The only thing that's before us now is the conditional use permit. So sir, no, we can't, we can't solve, but one issue for you tonight.
Harvey? It's worth noting, I think, that if there is an issue with the parking restricting the availability, the number of employees, that if these circumstances are too restrictive, that at the conditional use permit at least would allow the facility to be up and running, and a variance for parking is something that can be sought at a later date. So, this not to say that...
Yeah, that's what I understood, from what Ms. Pearson said, that that is not an impossible problem to deal with, but just not before us today. So we can't deal with that today. Are there any further questions based on those comments? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here that wants to speak in favor of? Would you please come forward and sign in and state your name?
My name is Kim Kissinger Moreno. My husband Jerry and I... How's that? My name is Kim Kissinger Moreno. My husband Jerry and I own the building at 1101 East Colorado. We purchased it in 2005 and moved our engineering company in there. We were in there for 10 years. And we are fully supporting the kids' campus moving in. The applicants have 10 years of experience in daycare. They have a facility in Madison, Wisconsin, and Columbus, Ohio, both of which are successful. And since getting to know them, I found that they not only care about the children, but they, they go beyond that. They work with the families that are underprivileged and provide them additional care that they need, and also if they need clothing or shoes, those sorts of things for their children. So they very much care for the children and the families that they service. And so my husband and I are very much in support of them coming into this building. We think the area could certainly benefit from a daycare. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard in favor of the request? Is there anyone here opposed to the request that would like to be heard? Are there any additional comments from staff in light of the testimony given by the petitioner and the supporting witness? Any further comments from the board? I believe we're ready to call for the motion.
Okay. I move, I move that we grant the proposed conditional use, ZBA 2000-C-01, with the following conditions. Number one, the use must conform to all applicable zoning, building development, and State of Illinois Department of Children and Family Service codes. And number two, the use generally conforms with the site plan and floor plan submitted in this application. And number three, the parking lot is restriped to indicate 12 spaces and one handicap space, for a total of 13 spaces. I think that's it.
It's now been moved, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Now been moved and seconded is, are there any further discussion? Then call the motion for vote.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrand?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes. That motion carries.
Is that now approved? Is there any further, that doesn't go to the city council or anything, right?
No, it does not.
That motion is approved. I now call for hearing, ZBA 2016-major-09. I mean, we have a staff report, please.
Okay, good evening. So this is a request for a major variance to allow the installation of air conditioning units that would encroach into the required front yard of the property at 1901 South Philo Road, which is actually just east of the property that we were just discussing in the previous case. So this, the lot in this case is a corner lot. It's at the corner of Philo Road and East Colorado Avenue. And being a corner lot, it has two required front yards, one along Philo and one along Colorado. The air conditioning units would be placed in the north yard next to Colorado Avenue. They would use by Marco's Pizza, which is a proposed pizza restaurant that plans to move into the northern portion of the building on the site, and that's the Family Video Building, if you're all familiar with that. Let me pull up a site plan here. And you can also find it in your memo under exhibit A. So this property is zoned B3, and the required front yards in B3 are 15 foot. The yard on the north side of the building is 15.3 feet, and the proposed air conditioning units and the fencing to, to screen the units would extend six feet from the wall of the building, and it would reduce... feet from the wall of the building, and it would reduce the required front yard to fifteen or from fifteen feet to nine point three feet, hence the reason for this variance request. The applicant and city staff did discuss alternative locations, and really, the only ones, uh, the only alternatives here would be on the west side or on the east side, but the north side was really the most feasible and the most desirable for all parties involved. Um, you'll notice on the, on the site plan that the, the building there is built really close to the property lines. It's only twelve feet from the western property line. As I mentioned, it's only a little over fifteen feet from the north property line, so it's really tight in there. It's close to the required yards, so it's, it's difficult to sort of squeeze in the mechanicals, in this case, the air conditioning units. Um, this area is in the Philo Road business corridor. Um, as you can see, most of the surrounding properties are commercial buildings. You can also see on the table on page two, the surrounding land uses. So on to the particulars of the case. Um, air conditioning units are not required, or they are considered mechanical equipment and are prohibited from being located in required yards. Um, and this variance request would allow the air conditioning units to be placed in that required front yard on Colorado. Marco's Pizza would occupy the north part of the building, so the, uh, the three options for the air conditioning units, which need to be placed outside, uh, the three options would be putting them on the west, the north, or the east. I mean, you can see in Exhibit D, um, the alternative locations. I apologize, I mislabeled this one on the first page of Exhibit D. South is actually the west side of the building. Um, and one thing you'll note on this exhibit is, um, right up against the building is a utility easement, which would really make placing the units on the west side of the building much less desirable. Also, putting the units in this location would shrink the, uh, the access to that alley. It is a vacated alley, so it's not a public alley, but people still use it for access. I did receive a call from the property owner to the building, uh, to the west, and he expressed support for keeping the air conditioning units out of that alley. Um, he's had problems in the past where, um, that, when that alley has had to be closed off for, for whatever reason, people have used his parking lot as a thoroughfare, and he's concerned that, um, that any, um, encroachment of, of the AC units into the alley would, would make his parking lot more attractive to people driving through. Um, so he is fully in support of the north, uh, the northern location. On the east side of the building, it's the front of the building. Um, it wouldn't be very attractive, or, uh, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be attractive to put the, the units there. It would also obstruct that sidewalk that goes along the front of the building. Um, so really, the most feasible location would be this northern location, um, up against the, the north wall of the building and in the, the required yard. Um, so I'll, I'll try and quickly go through the variance criteria. Um, number one is that there are special circumstances or practical difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned. Um, as I mentioned, air conditioning units must be placed outside, and this building is really right up against two, um, uh, two yards on the north side and on the west side, which either one of those would require a variance. Um, and, uh, the west side and the east side would be problematic, so the most feasible is on the north side. Um, so we feel that there are special circumstances with this building and the site. Number two is that the variance will not serve as a special privilege because the request is necessary due to special circumstances. As I just mentioned, there are special circumstances that don't really exist for, for most other buildings. Uh, most commercial buildings have space where you can put in the utilities that you need. Um, so this really is a special circumstance of this site. Number three is that the variance request was not the result of a situation created by the petitioner. Um, in this case, it was not. Um, the building was built in the early two thousands, well before the petitioner became involved with it. Number four is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We do not think that it would alter the character of the neighborhood. Number five is that it will not cause nuisance to the adjacent property owner. Um, this would not cause nuisance to adjacent property owners, and as I mentioned, the, uh, property owner to the west is in favor of the variance. And finally, number six, uh, which on your memo is also labeled number five again, but I assure you it's number six. I gotta check my numbering. Yes, it is. Number six, the variance represents generally the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request, and the applicant has chosen an air conditioning system that would have the smallest footprint possible, and they'll keep the encroachment into the front yard to a minimum, and it'll also be, I'll add, that it'll be screened from the sidewalk. Um, and you can see some of the renderings, uh, further along in Exhibit D. So that concludes my report. Um, there are three options that the zoning board of appeals has in this case. You can forward it to the city council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested. You can forward it to the city council with a recommendation to approve with certain terms and conditions, or you can deny the variance request. Staff recommends that the ZBA approve the variance to allow the reduction in the front yard setback from fifteen feet to nine point three feet. I can take questions. Keith Haza is here to speak on behalf of the petitioner. Um, Keith works with Family Video.
Excuse me, are there any questions for staff?
Where's the current air conditioning units?
There are...that's a good question. Um, there are air conditioning units currently on the, uh, on the south side of the building, um, down in this area here. Um, this, the site plan in your memo is the, is based on, the underlying plan here is the as-built plan from, from when the building was built back. I think it was in two thousand and two or two thousand and three.
So we're adding air conditioning to the building? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, it would be adding it for Marco's Pizza, which, if you look at the site plan, they're gonna occupy some portion of this, this northern part, and the AC units need to be next to, next to the, the pizza part. Um, so it wouldn't make sense to say, put them next to where they already exist.
Then the, uh... When we say it's going to encroach five point seven feet into the required front yard, that's taking into consideration the slab and the fencing. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
So all that would get done if the motion was just to, to do this to five point seven? You following me? Are, by just doing that, are we saying that they are gonna fence it in there?
Yes, they, they will fence it. Um, it, that might be a requirement in the zoning ordinance, but we could certainly, um, if you like, we could just add that as...
It says that in the, in the memorandum here. It does say that, and you read it out loud, so I'm saying that that's part of the testimony. Does it need to be in the motion, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I suppose, yeah.
I think so.
It wouldn't hurt anything to add it, so...
Okay.
Then my question is, um, this is all, one building now, and it's gonna be split off into the pizza part, and that's why it needs another, because one, one occupant may have different cooling needs than the other.
That's correct.
So that's why one is needed, even though there are ones there now?
Right, currently, yeah, yes.
Now, I think that's follow-up on Charles' question. Now it makes sense why, why another one is needed. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Petitioner desire to speak? Please come forward. Sign in and indicate who you are, please.
Very good. Um, my name is Keith Haza. I'm the regional manager for Highland Ventures, which I think you all know probably is Family Video. And, um, Family Video, uh, we first started running videos back in nineteen seventy-eight, and about four years ago, um, you know, we discovered, or we finally realized that people liked to eat pizza too while they watched their movies, and so we started franchising Marco's Pizza, which is a, you know, delivery carryout business. And so what we've done is we've co-located a Marco's Pizza with our Family Video stores. And, uh, we've done this now in about a hundred and thirty locations throughout the, I guess, throughout the Midwest. We're in, I guess, a nineteen-state footprint now, so we're kind of out of, out of the Midwest. But, um, and what that allows us to do is that concept pizza and a movie is you can get online, you can order a pizza, you can order a movie, and somebody will knock on your door and bring you both, and then bring your movies back, you know? So, um, it's been a real successful concept for us. Obviously, the pizza's great. We sell a lot of pizza, and that's a great business. But the other advantage is, you know, Family Video has been here since, I think, two thousand and three, I believe, and, um, it's really, it's really added, uh, some vitality to the video and game rental business, because we can market the two together. There's, there's just a lot of efficiencies, you know? If you, if you, if you buy a pizza, you get a free movie, and just, and just a lot of things like that. So it's a concept that not only it'll, it'll add a business to the, to the location, but it'll also help kind of revitalize a business that's been here for, you know, thirteen years. Um, you know, some of the question, I, I guess, you know, the, the building is a hundred and thirty-five feet long, and the, and, and as I understand, the air conditioning, if we, if we could place it on the south side, I don't even know if that's feasible, but it, it wouldn't be efficient to bring it all the way down a hundred and thirty-five feet, because the, the, the footprint of the actual building won't change, but we're gonna, you know, put a demising wall up, and, and we'll, and we'll, um, uh, have, have like fifteen hundred square feet of that end will be the Marco's Pizza. So, again, I answer any questions you may have, but that's kind of the, I guess, the thumbnail.
Are there any questions for the petitioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Based on any of the comments of the petitioner, are there any additional questions for staff? Hearing none, then I believe we are at the point where we're ready to have the motion called. So we need a motion. Go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, I move we approve ZBA case two thousand and sixteen dash major dash oh-nine, uh, a request to, uh, allow the installation of air conditioning units that will encroach five point seven feet into the required front yard at nineteen-oh-one South Philo Road. And I'd add one condition, that the AC units be screened appropriately with a fence.
It's now, now been moved. Is there any second to that motion?
Second.
It's now been moved, and second, is any further discussion? I believe then we're ready to call the motion for a vote.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Warren Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf? Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Mr. Cho?
Yes.
That motion carries by the, well, it carries unanimously, so obviously carries by the necessary margin for a major variance, and it will be called and heard at what, the city council meeting?
It'll be at the city council meeting on September the sixth, which is the day after Labor Day.
It'll be called and heard at the city council meeting of September the sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Thank you, sir. Any old business?
No.
Any new business?
None from us.
We have no audience left, so there's no audience participation. Is there a staff report?
There is no staff report.
Study session?
Not that either.
I believe the business before the board, this date is concluded, so I move that we adjourn.